I'd like to call our November 21st meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Prior to doing that, actually, let me rephrase. It's going to be to approve the agenda as amended. We have a few amendments this evening, the first of which will appear on item 11-171, the appointment to a city council vacancy. In the second line of the motion, it should read "unexpired term of Glenn Law," not "on Glenn Law." The second addition to the agenda this evening is in item 11-174, proposed speed limit changes for Michigan Ave. Following a presentation by Lieutenant Gary McGee of the Michigan State Police, there will be a presentation and comment by our state representative, Mark Womet. And then at the end of that motion, following Michigan Avenue, the clerk would like to insert language, and I quote, "to approve and adopt the resolution opposing the speed limit increases." Is that correct, City Clerk? Okay, I'll read that one more time. "To approve and adopt the resolution opposing the speed limit increases." And as an FYI, you should all have, from the clerk, a copy of the resolution opposing the changes on your desk this evening. And the final correction to the agenda this evening is the removal of item 11-176, update on the impact of loss of personal property taxes. So that item has been removed. Oh, and the resolution under the consent, within the consent agenda, referencing a balanced approach to deficit reduction, that has been revised. So with that, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Let Mr. Rhodes be the mover and Mr. Girbaugh be the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. I also need a motion this evening to excuse the absence of Mayor Driscoll.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. We move on now to item 11-171, the appointment to city council to fill the vacancy of Glenn Law. This is a motion to confirm the appointment of James Roth to city council to fill an unexpired term of Glenn Law ending January 1, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Ms. Tihar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. The city clerk will now swear in Mr. Roth.
Would you like to make a statement? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of constable.
The duties of office of constable.
Complete unexpired term.
Complete unexpired term.
Of Glenn Law.
Of Glenn Law.
Ending January 1, 2012.
Ending January 1, 2012.
And then for the city of Saline.
And then for the city of Saline.
County of Washington.
County of Washington.
And state of Michigan.
And state of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So, yes.
So help me God.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Roth, we'd like to welcome you to the dais. Congratulations on your appointment, and more importantly, on your election to city council two weeks ago, and we look forward to working with you.
You're welcome, Council.
Thank you, Roth. We move on to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury, under 11-172, on the finance, on our investment report. June 30th, the cemetery perpetual care fund had $999,000 plus another 500, so almost a million. But it appears that on October 6th, we have $660,000 in the perpetual care fund. So whether that means that about $340,000 has been put into the general fund for possible improvements, but I know we're not supposed to co-mingle costs, so I can't take my time for anymore. The other thing is on the highway speed thing, I had the pleasure of talking to Mr. Lieutenant McGee, and my concern is between Lewis Street and Mills Road. Because not only the light, there's been very, a lot of accidents at that point, and I explained to him my concern on how the aisles merge. And when you're in the right-hand lane, you kind of go up to the Legion, and then you go a little farther, and then you have in the left-hand lane, the entrance of Curtis Park. As people do do at State Street, they have a tendency to pass you on the right. And it has become a concern, I think it's a chronic problem. That is a very dangerous area, and I'm hoping that the lieutenant would be able to reevaluate that. In general, I know if a car goes 45 miles an hour, you can use some kind of calculator and find out how many feet it'll stop in. But a truck cab will stop with the amount of load they have on the back. Michigan has the highest load limit of the United States. And that's another thing I think should be addressed. Thank you very much for your kindness.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any other citizen comments? Seeing none, we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council's discussion. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt? Approve and adopt?
It's been moved by Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. There are no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business, item C-11-173, the retirement of Police Chief Paul L. Button. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 14th, 2011, letter from Paul L. Button notifying council of his intent to retire effective January 16th, 2012, with regret, and to thank Police Chief Button for his 17-plus years of service with the city of Saline. Is there a motion?
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Seconded, moved by Mr. Rhodes, excuse me, seconded by Ms. Tihar. Is there any discussion or comment?
Do we have the police chief come up and comment?
Mr. Button, would you care to comment?
He's never been one to shy from the microphone.
Yeah, I'm a little shy. I would just like to say that it's, my career has spanned 47 years in police work, and after some long talks with my family, I think this is the best move for me, move on to the next stage of my life and see what's out there that I can do next. And I do appreciate the opportunity to serve the people of the city of Saline as their police chief. It's been a very rewarding experience. It's been a lot of fun, and at times challenging, but I've enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Button.
Thank you.
Are there any comments? I would just like to say, Mr. Button, on behalf of the entire council, we do want to thank you for your 17-plus years of service, and I'm reminded of a quote President Kennedy was fond of that states that effort and courage are meaningless without direction and purpose, and your life certainly has had direction. You are obviously very enthusiastic and passionate about public service and about law enforcement, and that has benefited you personally and professionally, but more importantly, it's benefited the people that you've served, the great people of the city of Ann Arbor and Saline. So we do thank you for your service. Okay? We do have a motion to acknowledge receipt. I'm sorry, Mr. Cantwell.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just wanted to take the opportunity to say thanks to Chief Button and the almost four years that I've had the pleasure and honor of working with him, and as you all have had and worked with him as well. But I just want to say thank you for your commitment and your service to the community. The chief has been, he's been my confidant, and so I will certainly miss him. A lot of people I know will miss him. The department will miss him. He's taken this, elevated this department to extremely high-level professional department, and it is very well thought of, not only in Watney, but in all of southeast Michigan. And so I just want to say thank you very much, and I appreciate your friendship and all your efforts. So thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor of acknowledging receipts signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to item 11-174, proposed speed limit changes for Michigan Ave. This time, I'd like to invite Lieutenant Gary McGee from the Michigan State Police Traffic Service to come forward and present to council.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council, for having me. This thing kind of got jump-started a little bit. I called the chief here a couple of weeks ago. We had a short discussion. I asked him to kind of check with everybody and feel the, you know, the process out and see what folks thought, and, you know, next thing you know, it's in the paper and all those sort of things. So I just want to let everybody know that the numbers that I gave the chief are not final. I spoke with M.D.O.T. today. We had a fairly lengthy discussion that there were some concerns here in the city. I let them know that I was going to be here tonight to hopefully address some of those concerns. So the numbers that were presented are not the final report. So I just want to make sure that's out there. M.D.O.T. and MSP always work with the local municipalities, the cities, the townships, to address the concern, to explain what we're doing, and explain what will happen after the changes are implemented, but more importantly, try to explain what will not happen after they're implemented. Establishing speed limits is a very counterintuitive process. I've been working with M.D.O.T. now for about 15 years in this, and just to let you know, we have adjusted speed limits in the upward direction in well over 200 different road segments around the state. So by no means is Saline, you know, out of the ordinary. It's something that we do very routinely. We lower speed limits also, all around the state. So this is just a review process that we are required to do for our policy to ensure that the roads that all of us drive on are set correctly. Artificially low speed limits can actually detract from traffic safety. They can make a road less safe. When we have an improper speed limit, the driver expectations don't match the signing there, and we will get a lot of hazardous actions on the road, tailgating, lane changes, aggressive or frustrated driving. So there's a lot of bad things that can happen from an artificially low speed limit. So just as kind of a background. The way this started, again, MSP, we have a policy to review speed limits. We try to do it at least every 10 years. And again, Saline was just kind of next in line, so to speak. We have some historical speed studies from M.D.O.T. One of my traffic services sergeants from this area conducted additional speed studies, and we determined that some of the areas within the city on US 12 are in need of correction. Some of them are where they should be, and some of them are a little bit too low. Again, this process is under 257-628 in the Michigan Vehicle Code, which assigns the responsibility and the authority of M.D.O.T. and MSP to work jointly to establish that safe and realistic speed limit. The numbers that were proposed initially, starting from west to east, would be to start the reduced speed limit of 45 miles an hour at Austin Road, and continue that, hopefully I get all these right. I have several different notes here after speaking with M.D.O.T. again today. And extending that to, I believe it's Lewis Street. In speaking with M.D.O.T. today, there is definitely the potential, and this matches some of the speed studies, to implement a shorter 45 from Austin to River Oaks. It's only a few blocks. That section of road is a five-lane roadway. There's some commercial development there. There's a car dealership. Not a lot of residential in that section. So that shorter 45 would act as kind of a transition zone from the rural environment west of town, where your 85th percentile speeds out there are probably close to 65. The 55 doesn't work real well in a lot of those situations either. And again, it would just create that short transition zone where the motorist, we automatically adjust our speed to the driving environment. When we go from that rural environment to a commercial, it's a five-lane, there's some turning traffic and those sorts of things, we automatically adjust our speed downward. From River Oaks to Lewis, which Lewis is kind of the beginning of the downtown section, there's sort of a fine line there between 40 and 45, but based on the comment earlier, based on that lane drop as you head westbound, that's kind of a, kind of a different situation there on that street, based on the park and the bridge and those sort of things. A 40 would probably be an absolutely acceptable speed through that section. I believe that's three lanes in there. The downtown section from Lewis to Harris, that is absolutely a downtown business district. 30 mile an hour works perfectly through there. It's just an ideal speed for that type of situation. From, I guess it would be Haro, Harris, excuse me, to Maple, we get into a four-lane situation on the road. It's mainly residential. I think there's a little bit of commercial mixed in there. It's pretty much a straight, flat stretch. It's currently 35. All of the indicators point to 40 as being an ideal speed limit for that section of road. Once you hit Maple, we transition again to a five-lane road, a purely commercial five-lane. It's not really a business district, but a commercial area. Until you get to Hooper. Past Hooper is really, there's not a lot going on there as far as access points or businesses. You have the parking lots for the industrial plant, I forget which plant that is, on the north side of the road, and there's, my memory serves, there's not a lot going on on the south side. So from Hooper out to industrial, that would go from 45 to 50. Now, all of these limits that I are throwing out there are based on speed studies. The numbers that I just laid out and explained are representative of what the everyday, normal, safe driver is driving out there every single day. Again, I've been responsible and involved with increasing and decreasing speed limits as much as 15 or 20 miles an hour, and the biggest fear that everybody has is that currently it's 35 down by the park, for an example. Folks are going 40 to 43. The fear is that if we increase the speed limit, travel speeds will also increase by that same increment. So if they're going 40 now, they're going to be 45. That is, again, a well, you know, well-versed or well, multiply-used scenario, and I can tell you, it just does not happen. Speed limits have very, very, very little to do with actual travel speeds. It's a counterintuitive process, but again, nobody left their house this morning intending to crash. So we drive at that safe, reasonable speed, depending on the conditions. People are probably driving a couple miles an hour slower right now because it's dark than it would be during the day. If it's snowing, they're going to drive slower. If it's raining, they'll drive somewhere in the middle. If there's a pedestrian or a bicyclist on the road, we tend to slow down, go around that hazard. So we are very good at being safe drivers. The last thing I'll talk about is the enforcement end of it. When we have an artificially low speed limit, example, close to here, I think it's M-14 just north of Ann Arbor, there's a little stretch of freeway where it crosses the river. It used to be 55 miles an hour. I can tell you that the compliance rates for motorists on that section of road were in the single digits, meaning nobody was going 55 miles an hour or slower. Police agencies used to target that section of road extremely heavy. There were, I don't know how many hundreds or thousands of tickets written on that section of road. Along with M.D.O.T., we corrected or increased that speed limit to 65. Travel speeds did not change. Enforcement changed. You don't see enforcement out there near as much. What that does is that frees up police officers to work on issues that have a true, true impact on traffic safety. Drunk driving, lack of restraint use, intersection violations. Those are the things that we can truly enforce to impact traffic safety. Over 30% of our fatal crashes in the state are still, they still deal with alcohol. That's crazy. 30 to 40% of our fatalities, folks that die in car crashes, are not buckled up. Those are things that we can truly focus on and make a difference. An artificially low speed limit, if we try to enforce that, try to force people to drive slower, it's been tried since 1974, and it simply does not work. We do not have the resources to do that, nor should we. We should not be penalizing the motoring public for traveling at a safe and reasonable speed. I'm not saying 60 through town is neither safe nor reasonable. That is something that we need to enforce. But traveling 40 in some of these 35s or 50 in some of these 45s currently, that is not a hazardous type of action. So this, I usually, I can talk for an hour and a half. I have a presentation with lots of examples. I know we don't have that time. But again, we're not finalized with anything. I spoke with M.D.O.T. today. I'm going to discuss them with tomorrow, some of the outcomes of this meeting. Hopefully, we can come to a final resolution between MSP and M.D.O.T., and then we can relay that information back to the city and see where we need to go from there.
Thank you, Lieutenant McGee. Other questions or comments for the lieutenant? Mr. Rhodes?
Couple things, and one is actually in support of some adjustment to the speed limit. The speed limit on Maple out here was changed a couple, three years ago, and driving on that after the speed limit was much more comfortable experience because I didn't have to keep looking in mirror view mirror of somebody riding my bumper, and you could see their frustration run on their face because I was doing 25 and everybody else wanted to do 35 or 40. So anyway, that one worked okay. The issue or concerns that I have with these current potential adjustments are twofold. One is relatively short periods of time before the speed limit changes, and in just a few blocks, and it changes again. My inherent feeling is that it ought to be a longer stretch between changes of speed limit. And then the other is that on the section from Maple to Hopper out there, there's just a boatload of entrances and exits off that road. And it's not unusual, when I drive that, to see people slamming on the brakes, trying to keep from hitting a person who just all of a sudden found the driveway they wanted to get into, or the business, whatever. And so I think an increase in speed along that section could be detrimental.
Okay. Great questions. First, I'll address the short speed zones. You're right, generally, if the driving environment is consistent along a given stretch of road, we don't want to piece different speed limits in there because it's not fair to the motorist. They don't recognize those speed changes, and they just simply don't work. But again, out here from Austin to River Oaks, there is that short five-lane section in there, and if you look at the numbers and if you look at the driving environment in that case, I think it works quite well. But I agree, too many of those is generally not a good idea, but we try to focus on the driving environment and driving behavior of the folks that are using that road every day. And if those folks are telling us that that shorter zone is acceptable, then it tends to work. But again, that's something we do think about, absolutely. On the other end, I'm talking about access points. Access points are one of the biggest drivers of, or influences of how we drive. I have did, and been involved with and reviewed hundreds or thousands of speed studies, and there is a direct correlation with the number of access points, driveways and intersections along a given stretch of road, direct correlation to that, and the speed that we choose. I always say there's a little guy back here that tells us brake or gas. And the number of potential hazards, every intersection, every driveway is a potential hazard. So that's why in that area, we're going that 40, 45 miles an hour, or if you go just east of there, past Hooper or Hopper, we're up into the 50s. Even though, you know, it's all five-lane road, the road itself doesn't change, but the roadside environment changes. And those things about, you know, people slamming on the brakes and making bad turns and pulling out in front of people, those things cannot be corrected or controlled by a speed limit. Those are other issues. Maybe it's signing, right turn flares, you know, there's a lot of different things that can be done to assist the motorist in making those decisions when to pull off of or onto a road. The one last thing, and I, on that, you mentioned about increasing the speed in that area, and that's probably one of the most common mistakes that everybody makes. Traffic engineers make that mistake. They use speed and speed limit the same. They're absolutely different. A speed limit is simply a number where enforcement can take action. Speed limits have, again, very little, if anything, to do with actual travel speeds. We can take a speed limit and go up or down or leave it the same, travel speeds remain extremely consistent.
Anything else, Mr. Rhodes?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
One quick question, just to build on what Councilman Rhodes said. Between Lewis and Mills, that's only .2 miles.
Okay.
.2 tenths of a mile. It's 2 tenths of a mile between Lewis and Mills. I mean, we have to go from 30 to 40 to 45 in 2 tenths of miles. Is that practical?
Well, that, was that part of the initial numbers that I gave the chief?
That's on the, yeah. Yeah, the original email, yes.
Was it? I think that's some of the, some of the area that I spoke with M.D.O.T. about, about potentially making that, keeping it 40 from downtown.
Or the other, yeah.
Out past the park, yeah. And again, that's that, kind of that same question where if the driving environment warrants it, yes, it makes sense. In this case, again, there's that downhill with the lane drop, there's a few different things going on there. So yeah, that's one of the sections that I need to get with M.D.O.T., and again, I will note the concerns from several folks here about that section. Potentially 40, a better number there. I mean, I'd have to get into the whole study. And I haven't, even at this point, I haven't had a chance to truly review the actual crash data, the different intersections in that section. Sometimes that has some bearing on a speed limit. Many times, crash data or an excessive number of crashes, we can find another problem, you know, like if there's, I'm sure there are some sideswipe crashes in there, and it's simply because of the configuration of the road. I mean, ideally, we either need to maintain three lanes or four lanes through there or do something different, but because of the river and the park, it's probably not real practical to realign the roadway in there. But yeah, that's an area that we're going to do, take a little closer look at.
Thank you.
Mr. Girbaugh?
The one comment that we've been looking at, too, is the issue of pedestrians and bicycles and whatever. As we start speeding up the speed, we're basically deterring against actually having more individuals wanting to be in that area or even attempt to try and cross it, especially near the park in that area. Where I'm concerned is that as we continue to make this more of a thoroughfare instead of just a city street, I need to know how the, how basically the state is dealing with this, especially when we're looking at alternative transportations and all these other options to be a healthier community and such.
Complete streets.
Right.
I'm on the governor's advisory council for complete streets, and that's a huge concern. Great question. The one thing about an artificially low speed limit, let's say through, the governor said, "I want 25 miles an hour on that section out there by the park." The science could be put up, maybe hypothetically, let's, I don't want, I guess I don't want to go there, but hypothetically, put 25s up there. Everyone would feel like it was a safer road. We would say, "Great. It's pedestrian-friendly, it's bicycle-friendly, it's a safe street. It's 25 miles an hour." In reality, the travel speeds will still be 40. So what we've, what we've created is a false sense of security with the pedestrians and the bicyclist. That scares me. They have the, potentially have the tendency to be a little more cavalier, a little nonchalant out there on the road, thinking that it's a safe road. We have to look at realities here. US 12 through Saline is absolutely a thoroughfare. I don't know how many cars it carries, 30, 20,000, 30,000 a day. Not a lot we can do about that. So what we have to do is we have to optimize the motorist, the pedestrians, the bicyclist. We have to get everybody together and engineer that road to best suit everybody. And if we can safely and efficiently move those cars through there and give the pedestrians and the bicycles a true picture of what's actually going on out there, I think that's the best we can do. Now, ideally, we widen the road, we put bike lanes in, we put pedestrian overpass in. There's a lot of things that can be done, but it's a lot of money, it's right-of-way issues, it's safety issues, there's a lot of different things out there that M.D.O.T. uses to decide when and where they're going to spend the, you know, tens of millions of dollars on road repair. So again, I just, I think it's extremely important. I think it's extremely important that all the road users have a true expectation of what's going on out there. Quick example, there was a fatality in front of a high school in Oakhamus. The speed limit was fifty-five on the road. The engineering study said fifty-five is the perfect speed limit. The road commission, in my opinion, improperly reduced the speed limit to forty-five. The follow-up studies showed that the travel speeds and the traffic patterns on that road were exactly the, I mean, exactly the same before and after the change. But the people, the folks at the school were, were celebrating a victory by making a safer road. My fear is that a student is going to pull up to that driveway, try to make a left turn out onto Oakhamus Road, and assume that cars are now going slower than they actually are, and we're going to have another catastrophe. So that expectation and that, that sense of knowing what's going on out there, I think is critical to actually, to maximize traffic safety. We have to make the road match the engineering and the driver expectations and the normal, safe driving behavior.
Anything else, Mr. Geerbaugh?
Nope.
Any other comments from council?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. One last thing. I will take this back down, Dot. I'll talk about the concerns about the pedestrians and about the park and the lane merge and some of those other things. And before anything is finalized on paper, we will be back in touch.
Appreciate that, Lieutenant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite our state representative, Mr. Womack.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I want to congratulate Councilmember Roth for swearing in today.
Thank you.
Mark We Met, State Representative, thirty-five oh-two, River Pines Drive, Ian Arbor. I just wanted to add some thoughts regarding the change in speed limits, although knowing how important that is and the good work that our state police do, in particular, Lieutenant, the things that you do, I would hope that, and I know how important this is to communities. I see this throughout the district, that doing your resolution, getting your input into the system about your feelings, I think is critically important because it does need to reflect the character of every community as to speed limits. And I would encourage you to do the follow-up, to do the response to the resolution so that when it does become time, if indeed the speed limits are changed, that everyone's had a fair hearing on that. And I encourage you to continue to work closely with the state police in order to get what fits best for your community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for State Representative Womack?
We haven't heard anything on PPT, if there's, that's a sidebar going on. But we have no news yet on that, and probably won't until the first of the year, would be my guess.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
Okay, my friends, we move on to the motion. And again, I should add that we inserted some additional language. Before I ask for a motion, I just want to state publicly that I'm certainly in favor of acknowledging the verbal report from Lieutenant Gary McGee of the Michigan State Police. However, because he has yet to meet with MDOT regarding the specific changes relating to the speeds throughout our city, I think it's premature to, to either approve or adopt, or, or for that matter, a resolution regarding speed limits on US-12. So it would be my opinion that Lieutenant McGee, you take the feedback, the insights you heard this evening from City Council, relay that to MDOT, and then bring a message back to, to us.
I'll be back in two weeks.
Okay. Now, that's, that's my prerogative. Let's see what the rest of council feels. So we have the option of just acknowledging the verbal report, or we can add language to approve and adopt the resolution that was distributed. What's your pleasure?
First one.
So Mr. Peters wants to acknowledge the verbal report from Lieutenant McGee regarding the proposed speed limit changes to Michigan Ave., period.
But wait for the revisions to come through.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Discussion. Mr. Rhodes?
I'd support that approach also because there are some very specific items that are in this resolution, which we don't know to be true. And besides the potential speed limit changes at the various places, that last paragraph says, which will negatively impact pedestrian safety, and we don't know that. So even if we did it, I would have suggested which may negatively impact as a word change, but it appears that we may not have that resolution anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any additional comments? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Campo, do you have sufficient direction from council that you'll be in contact with Lieutenant McGee regarding the official report from Michigan State Police and MDOT, and it will come back at a subsequent meeting, I'm assuming December?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you again, Lieutenant.
Sir.
All right, my friends, moving on to item eleven dash one-seventy-five. This is a stipulation for settlement between Tyson Crop, Tissen Crop, excuse me, Materials versus the City of Saline. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November fourteenth, two thousand and eleven memo from City Assessor Catherine Skoll, and to approve or not approve the stipulation for settlement from, of the Michigan Tax Tribunal, docket number zero-three-nine-eight-five-four-five, resulting in a decreased taxable, decreased taxable value slash SEV of sixty-three thousand eight hundred dollars for two thousand and ten, and a decrease in taxable value, SEV, of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars for two thousand and eleven, resulting in an approximate refund of city taxes of one thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars, and to authorize or not authorize the city attorney to sign the stipulation as required. Is there a motion?
Could we hear from our city assessor prior to a motion?
Can I just move, acknowledge the receipt? We can make that motion and split it?
Okay, let's, let's split the motion in two. So the first motion is to acknowledge receipt, which has been moved by Mr. Geerbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. I would like to invite our assessor, Mrs. Skoll, forward to provide us with a verbal report regarding this agenda item.
Okay. I suppose I should ask, first of all, if there's particular questions that any members of city council wish that I address, or would you just like a brief explanation? Okay. This is an appeal to the tribunal for the Rio property located on Woodland Drive. It's actually being occupied currently by Molded Materials. It has a lease of the Tissen Crop building. This is two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven appeals. The original amount in contention was approximately six hundred thousand. As a result of multiple discussions between myself and the petitioner, it was determined actually that they, they actually acknowledged that they were somewhat incorrect in their original contention of value, and agreed that the value was more similar to what the city already had on the roll, although that the city was perhaps a little bit on the high side. And we did agree to a stipulation tentative upon city council's approval, of course, and that would result in a taxable, taxable value decrease on the two thousand and ten year of about sixty-three thousand, and a decrease on the two thousand and eleven taxable value of sixteen thousand. The amount of tax refund from the city total for the two years would be about twelve hundred dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Skoll. Is there, are there any questions for our city assessor? Mr. Rhodes?
Is this a negotiated settlement between yourself and the petitioner, or is this confirmation of a Michigan Tax Tribunal ruling?
No, this is, this is actually, this being brought forward to you today is a proposed settlement that my office has reached, a tentative settlement with the petitioner. It does require city council approval in order to be accepted. And then from there, if it were to be accepted by city council and the signatures are laid down agreeing to the settlement, at that point, it would go forward, forward to the state tax commission, and then we await the state tax commission order when the state tax, the, I'm sorry, I keep misspeaking, Michigan Tax Tribunal. When the Michigan Tax Tribunal, if they should follow up with an order, they would send the order to the city, and at that point, the city would change the rules.
So the Michigan Tax Tribunal is not obligated to follow this negotiated settlement that we proposed to them?
That is correct. They could reen their end as well if they found any reason that it was unacceptable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Are there any additional questions for Assessor Skoll? Seeing none, we appreciate your report. Thank you very much. We now have a subsequent motion to approve or not approve the stipulation for settlement. I'm actually not going to read the whole thing because I already read it.
I'm moved to approve and authorize.
All righty.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Geerbaugh and seconded by Ms. Tahar to approve and authorize. Is there a discussion? Mr. Geerbaugh?
I simply appreciate your work on this. It seems like it's a reasonable adjustment. And to spend more time on this and to try and appeal it and everything else, it's not worth the cost to the city. This is going to be, hopefully, adopted by the Michigan Tribunal, and move ahead. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business item eleven dash one-seven-seven. This is the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, PA one fifty-two of two thousand and eleven. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November seventeenth, two thousand and eleven memo from City Manager Campell, that the city manager be directed to implement the following medical benefit plan to become effective January one, two thousand and twelve, to be in compliance with Senate Bill Seven: A, a hard cap option, or B, opt out of the hard cap option and into an eighty-twenty split option, or C, a complete opt-out of PA one fifty-two for the calendar year of two thousand and twelve. Is there a motion?
Moved to acknowledge receipt and direct to implement option A, hard cap.
Okay. It's been moved by Rhodes to acknowledge receipt and implement option A. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Geerbaugh. Mr. Campo, would you care to go over your report that was submitted to council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Yeah, I'll try and keep this rather complicated matter fairly simple. But from our, as you may recall, from our six p.m. work session with a representative from Capnick Insurance to go over this, just briefly, as Mayor Protem mentioned, Public Act one fifty-two, which was recently passed two months ago or so, requires a maximum amount by a public employer, such as the city, as far as the maximum amount that it can pay towards its active employees' health benefits. This does not include optical or dental. This is just the health benefit. So the heart, there's, there's, as the motion reads, there's, there's a couple of options here. One is to adopt a hard cap, which sets a hard cap at fifty-five hundred dollars is the maximum amount that the city can pay towards a single person. A two-person plan is eleven thousand dollars a year, and then a family is fifteen thousand dollars per year. And that, as we discussed, is also the state. Department of Treasury will make changes to that on an annual basis based on the medical CPI, the cost of living, on an annual basis. So the, and then the second one is the eighty-twenty, where the city would pay maximum eighty percent of the premium, and the employee would be responsible for twenty percent. And I apologize, the hard cap, anything above that, above and beyond the hard cap, the employee is responsible for. As you also know, also know, the, currently, as of today, all of our actual employees are on the Simply Blue Plan, which is an HSA Health Savings Plan, where it's a high deductible, three thousand for a single person, and six thousand dollars for two-person or family deductible. That once the employee meets those, pays those deductibles, then everything else is a hundred percent, except for prescription drug. That's one thing we didn't talk about, but that still stays the same. The current prescription drug plan is, every, there's no, essentially no coverage on prescriptions until that deductible is met. Once a deductible is met, then a three-tiered system goes into place, which is ten, forty, and eighty copays. And that's even, that's after the deductible is met. With that savings, there's approximately, under the hard cap savings, there's about a thirty-nine thousand dollar savings to the city. And under the eighty-twenty, there's about a sixty-eight thousand dollar savings to the city. Those savings, of course, to the city would be borne by the employee, employees. As I said earlier, I believe certainly, certainly agree with the cost sharing, but I think we need a balanced approach. And we're currently in a wage freeze for this year. We don't know what the budget, proposed budget will look like. We'll find that out in a few months. But of course, this kicks in January first, so we need to move forward on that in the month of December, as far as open enrollment and that type of things, so employees have ample time to make decisions. So with the, the reason, my recommendation is hard cap because it's slightly, it's a little bit less burden on the employee. Like I said, where they're already paying a part of the deductible, as we also talked about that, high deductible is three thousand, six thousand. The city's currently paying seventy percent of that, employing thirty percent already. So that would be in addition to either hard cap or eighty-twenty. The other option is to opt out, officially opt out, two-thirds majority vote to opt out. And again, this is on an annual basis, that the city council will make this decision. And this is all, I apologize, I'm going to go backwards here. This is all part of the Economic Vitality Incentive Program, which was enacted via the budget by the governor this year. And there's three parts. You know, we recall, we get two pots of state revenue sharing. One is constitutional, which they, legislature cannot change. It's only changed by Board of the People, because it's in the state constitution, that formula. Then there's a second part called, used to be called statutory revenue sharing, and that's the one that the legislature have been essentially reducing on an annual basis since about ninety-nine, two thousand. That part, they've said, we're already going to be reduced by one-third of what we had last year. So in order to qualify for two-thirds of what we, what we got last year, we have to meet three components. One is the transparency, which is the city's dashboard, financial dashboard, and citizens' budget guide, which is already up and running on our, per the deadline of October first, on our city website. We also, by January first, which we'll be bringing to you in December, a collaboration consolidation plan, what we currently do and possible things we're looking at down the road. For our city services, that's another third. And then the third third, to make it whole, is by May, we have to have a plan of employee compensation. And this is part of that. So if the, the only way that we would lose our, this third, is if the city council took no action. So as long as you, if you were to opt out, as long as you officially did it by two-thirds vote, we would still qualify for that third of the money. And again, as we talked about, we're talking, right now, it's been reduced down to, this past year, we received approximately seventy-five thousand dollars from statutory revenue sharing, which is greatly reduced over the last ten years. But, so two-thirds of that is about fifty thousand. So we're looking at a third of fifty thousand, which is just under seventeen thousand dollars, which in the grand scheme, well, I'd say even in the grand scheme these days, that's a lot of money. So, so one way or the other, I would, I would recommend that the city council adopt something. And without getting too far into getting to get it, because it is pretty complicated, we're also, we also proposed, if you recall, alternative plans that are less, there are less of a plan design, less of a cost. less of a plan design, less of a cost, but it would be much easier for the employee to pay for, so it would be less, less benefit. But potentially for those that might say, you know, I, I'm all for the cost sharing, but I, you know, my finances are already tight and I can't necessarily afford that payment, that additional, because it's going to be per paycheck, pre-tax. We have another option, and I would propose if, that the council consider adopting that as well. Couple points of, to note, points of information. We still, you know, recall about the collective bargaining agreements that we have in place with the Teamsters and the police and the sergeant unions. Those folks, because they're under a current collective bargaining agreement, this would not fall, they would not fall under this. It would just be non-union, beginning January 1st, 2012. Teamster's current CBA collective bargaining agreement expires June 30th of 2012, so they would fall under this, these requirements, July 1st of 2012. But then the police officers and the sergeants would not fall under this until July 1st of 2013, as their CBA, current CBA expires June 30th of 2013. So having said that, with these options, we still have to find out whether or not we can offer, because it would be a, it is spelled out in all the, all three of the collective bargaining agreements, it's spelled out specific programs that we offer. Right, I mean, it talks about Community Blue and Simply Blue, and so as, and as you also recall, we would have to eliminate the PPO, Community Blue, to be able to offer this cheaper, Simply Blue coverage. So with a couple, if, if you were so inclined to, to adopt this, so we would no longer offer the Community Blue PPO. Conditions, one would be, we'd need to meet the Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Michigan underwriting requirements. Condition one. Condition two would be need to meet minimum requirement enrollment, which we, Tom Hudson here from Cap'nick told us that had to be at least two people minimum to enroll. And then in reference to the CBAs, that a mutual agreement would be required between the city and, and those collective bargaining units.
So is that the language that you suggest either we adopt as a separate motion or add as an addendum to item 11-177?
Either or, whichever. Again, I apologize, and it's, I know it's convoluted and complex, so I-
Could you restate that one more time, Mr. Campbell?
The convoluted and complex.
The actual verbiage of your motion or amendment.
Sure. And I actually have a, I can give it to the, to the clerk.
Oh, that'd be great.
But essentially stipulation one or condition one, we need to meet the Blue Cross, Blue Shield of Michigan underwriting requirements. We would need to meet minimum required enrollment. And then in reference to the collective bargaining agreements, the CBAs, we'd obviously have to have mutual agreement with the collective bargaining unit and the city.
Mr. Rhodes, would you be amenable to tacking that on to the motion that you moved?
Yeah, I would. I'm not sure I understand why we need to do it right now, but if that's the recommendation, I don't object to it.
Mr. Campbell, can you respond to Mr. Rhodes' suggestion or comment, rather? He doesn't have anything against the language that you suggested. He's just confused as to why we need to do it now.
Because we will be having our open enrollment with our employees, and we need to be able to offer that up to them if that, if the council so, you know, inclines. So we would have to, you would have to adopt that if those rules are satisfied through Blue Cross. As I said, and I apologize, we just received that, that information from Blue Cross earlier today. But, so we need to make, if, if we can offer it, if that's, if that's what the city council wants to do is offer that alternative, then I want to be able to have that in place as opposed to have to come back to another city council meeting. I believe, I believe open enrollment, I want to say the meeting is December 7th, I think. So we don't have a lot of time between now and then to come back to you all.
So it seems to me like the only thing we need to, to add is that we're going to offer those two plans without all the qualifications, because we're just offering them, and we need to meet those qualifications that we do. Just trying to keep the-
Sure.
-motion down to a-
Sure. Well, that, sure.
It's a complex thing.
No, I understand. Right. I just, I mean, I guess, if nothing else, and I would, I don't know if, if Mr. Grossman has any thoughts, maybe he doesn't, but I just want to make sure that those are, it's not a for-sure thing. We have a couple areas that we have to meet, that, a couple we won't know until we see if anyone wants to sign up for it, so.
Mr. Grossman, do you have an opinion on that?
Well, I think you could just add if available. In other words, you would-
Okay.
The motion can, can approve one plan or the other, whichever one you want, and then say if available.
Okay. If you, that's fine, if you feel, I just want to make, make sure everybody knows that it's not a for-sure thing.
Right. Are you comfortable with that language?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Girbaugh, as the secondor of the motion, are you comfortable with that additional language? Okay, very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Campbell regarding his report? I should comment, preface to the audience that we did, as Mr. Campbell alluded to, we did have a work session on this issue beginning at 6 o'clock. So if comments and dialogue are limited, you, you will understand why. So again, referring back to the motion, item 11-177, are there any comments prior to voting? Mr. Girbaugh?
I just want to appreciate staff's attempt on how to set this through and set up a new plan for us. Although we have three options, I think this is the more effective way to do it, instead of trying to put something in that would impact the employee significantly at one point in time. Even in my own consideration, from where I work, it's being put in place over a number of years, and so we're adapting that way. I would hope, and I do hope, that as we move forward in the next two years with the other agreements and such that we have with our other union individuals and such, that they will be adopting the same thing, and will recognize and acknowledge the individuals now taking a bit of a hit, and that they will eventually, if they want to be part of the whole team, will agree to work towards a similar type of situation.
Two options. Okay. Does that make sense? Yeah. Ms. Tihar?
I agree that the, the hard cap option is, is the best choice at this point, and I've read of it, but I do remain concerned about the somewhat inequitable distribution of the burden among different kinds of policyholders.
I would just add that although the solution is far from perfect, I would echo the comments made by my colleagues, Mr. Girbaugh and Ms. Tihar. I came into this evening's work session convinced that the hard cap option was the best option, and after a presentation from our city manager and outside consultant, I am more convinced than ever. I think it's a soft transition away from the service and amenities that we currently provide. It allows us to conform with Public Act 152 of 2011 and results in a small but meaningful cost savings to the city, while at the same time providing our, our employees with really outstanding and exceptional health insurance. So again, as I stated at the work meeting, the one good thing about Public Act 152 is it allows us to debate and discuss this issue annually. And although I don't think an 80/20 split is the appropriate option at this time, I would hope that we keep that option on the table in future negotiations and deliberations because many of us are convinced that, that our economy is, is not going to improve and that revenues will continue to be limited. So I think it's appropriate to keep all options on the table. But again, I do support the recommendation made by our city manager to adopt a hard cap option for this calendar year. Are there any additional comments? Okay, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion carries. Moving on to item 11-178, invoice for crack filling of roads. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 17, 2011 memo from Public Works Director Fordice to approve or not approve payment of invoice number 1506 in the amount of $15,624 to Skodeller Construction Incorporated for crack filling of roads. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Rhodes to approve and seconded by Ms. Tihar. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to discussion items, commission and committee reports from council members. Are there any commission or committee reports? Mr. Rhodes?
The Environmental Commission met on November 16th, and the major elements of our discussion is, were as follows, that we are continuing to work on developing an environmental checklist that would be appropriate to, to the city as opposed to the currently existing one, which is more oriented towards state concerns. And we are making contact with the county to consider, to gain more information to see if we should join the Community Partners for Clean Streams program that they have. And we will know more about that in our December meeting. And then we also have made contact with the County Conservation Office to get information about their 2012 tree and native plant sale, with the idea that if the data bears it out, that the Environmental Commission will purchase a number of seedlings and plants from the Conservation Department and give them away to celine citizens, an effort to help continue to improve the environment. And then we had a gentleman who joined the Citizen Advisory Group for the Environmental Commission, Zach Geiger, and we appreciate him, his coming to the, to the meeting, and we look forward to his participation. That's it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Peters?
Last week, we had our Productive Parks and Recreation Meeting, and the commission has already completed their SWAT and their goals for this year. We talked about ways to expand and improve the Green Thumb Award for 2012, and we discussed the, some of the park project priorities and the commission budget. In addition to that, here, just this past, this past week, we had our Celtic Festival Meeting, it was our bi, our bi-monthly meeting. We had 14 chairpersons in attendance. The enthusiasm's running high for the next festival, and we welcomed two new chairs, two new music artistic directors to our team. Pam Kittle and Bruce Conforth will be joining Sheila Graziano as festival artistic directors. And with them, they bring a wealth of experience with music connections, their knowledge of bands and contracts and sound systems, it's phenomenal. So they'll be a great benefit to the festival, and we're looking forward to another successful year this year.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Ms. Tihar?
The Arts and Culture Committee met last week. We continue to work on clarification of ownership of private property where we hope to place sculptures for the sculpture walk. It's turning out to be more tangled than we had thought. And the December meeting will include work on goals and planning out projects for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Girbaugh?
Historic District Commission met this month, and we're at a point now where we're having to reassess and design how we're going to actually handle interpretation of the Interior Secretary Guides for Historic Districts and the type of things that are going to be changed and such. It's becoming a little more of a discussion point, and recently, we had a window change that we're going to have to be looking at. And so any assistance or input that council would like to give the commission, I think, would be much appreciated. The Youth Council met last week also, and they're looking forward to participating in basically the holiday parade in a week and a half. And also, they're planning on their current fundraisers. One will be held in school, which is attempt to try and collect clothes for the Play-Doh closet and try to raise funds that way. And then also, they're looking forward to trying to produce blankets for Mott Hospital, which is one of the things they're hoping to do at the February lock-in. And so I'll have more of that information later on, and we may be looking for donations and such from the cities and citizens to assist this.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. I have two reports, the first of which is from the Planning Commission, which met two weeks ago on Wednesday evening. We reviewed proposed changes to the BP station at the west end of town. The property owner would like to tear down the gas station and insert a Burger King franchise into what is now the mini-mart. He received initial site plan approval, and he will be moving forward, hopefully. I, I should also note that there were, there are still a few concerns regarding the movement of traffic on that property and the number of parking spaces, as well as there were a few concerns brought to the commission's attention relating to a few issues with the property owners who are adjacent to that parcel. Hope that that communicate effectively to those individuals what he, he plans to do. Also, the initial site plan approval is contingent on the property owner paying all back taxes and being able to prove financial viability. The commission is determined not to have another hole in the ground. So if you have any questions relating to the Planning Commission, I'm happy to address them now or at any time. And then my second report is regarding the Cemetery Board of Appeals, which met last Tuesday under the leadership of Clerk Hill. We reviewed proposed rule changes that would affect the 90 or so new crypts that are going to be installed, but more importantly, the niches and columbarium in the mausoleum. We had a very thorough and substantive discussion, and document will need to come before council for final review and approval. And I just asked the city clerk, and she indicated to me that we will be seeing that sometime in the month of December. So just a heads up that that will be coming. Are there any additional commission or committee reports? Hearing none. Any reports or other announcements? None? Okay, we move on to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
I'm still Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury. Apparently, I didn't explain, I, I thought maybe it would be addressed as far as the difference of the almost million dollars for the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund and the $340,000 that has been apparently put someplace else. There are laws, and I've looked up some of them on the computer, and I asked Mr. Campbell as far as irrevocable trusts. And I really, as a property owner, on behalf of the people in the cemetery and that have lots, I would like and am requesting a written opinion from our city attorney or Michigan Municipal League on the properness of getting into land with the perpetual care fund. I was hoping that would be addressed tonight because in the one law, it says irrevocable perpetual care is established and commingling is prohibited. Now, I, I'm just a layman, asking questions, but it's a lot of money difference, and I think it's a reasonable question. I also have a, for the history, maybe you can get copies. It was telling about 1924, when the building, the village acquired the meat farm for a dollar, and that was to go with our cemetery. It was not paid out of perpetual care funds. It was a loan that was to be paid off. I am again asking for the legal opinion on the perpetual care fund and its expenditures. I think another thing that is sad is that the American flags that were put out Memorial Day are still in the cemetery five months later, seven months later. And I don't know what the arrangement is. I know the Legion, but I would hope that the city and the Legion or someone could get together. There's no reason why the American flags are on the ground. Someone needs to be actively looking at the cemetery, and when you've got a million dollars and we can't take the old flowers up and everything, we have a problem. That's part of our pride, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any additional public comments? Mr. Campbell and Mr. Burgoyne, would you care to comment on the situation of the dollars in the perpetual care fund? in the perpetual care fund?
Yeah. The balance in the perpetual care fund is $999,571.38 as of June 30th, 2011. It has been audited and found to be a, an ordinary revenue fund. It is not a perpet, a trust, it's not set up as a trust, it's set up as a revenue fund. There are rules and regulations for the cemetery, where the city council has committed the dollars, they're committed. The dollars are committed to perpetual care. In a revenue fund, you can use the revenues for light maintenance or heavy maintenance. Heavy maintenance includes, and, and development, you can use it for development. And, and especially with this type of development, where our city engineer showed that the funds would be returned over a period of time. So everything shown is proper, we were audited. This, this fund was audited and placed according to Gatsby 54 procedure, which they did this year, Governmental Accounting Standards Board Rule 54. This, this is a perpetual care fund, which is properly being used, and was audited and found to be sound.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Campbell, do you care to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Portem. Actually, talking with city attorney Grossman last week, he has issued an opinion, so if Allen would like to forward that on, as far as right now, but I haven't, I just received it today.
Mr. Grossman, would you care to comment?
Well, the, the opinion that Mrs. Hess has asked for has been completed and filed with the city, and she's welcome to a copy of it if she'll stop by City Hall later. We don't generally use council period to carry on a trial or-
Sure.
-hearing regarding an issue, and I don't wanna get into that tonight. I will say, however, that all that Mr. Burgoyne has said regarding the proper use of the fund and its auditing and so forth, is all correct, and this section, the, the section that deals with the use of the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund is, specifically authorizes the use of the, the perpetual care fund for reasonable capital improvements in city cemeteries, which will provide additional burial space, spaces to the extent that the use of such principles shall not substantially impair the earning capacity of the balance of the fund, and after approval, a resolution of the city council. And that's section 26-17 of the Cemetery Ordinance. There is a state law which deals with trusts and that sort of thing, which doesn't apply to the city of Celine, because it specifically exempts municipal corporations, churches, and religious organizations. So the question has been answered, but we aren't gonna get into a debate about it tonight.
Appreciate that, Mr. Grossman, and I would just like to state one more time for the record, because I've been asked this, this question, oh boy, at least a Dixie dozen number of times. We are utilizing in excess of $300,000 from the perpetual cares fund to create essentially 90 additional crypt spaces in Oakwood Cemetery. Is that correct, Clerk Hill? What is also true and irrefutable is that the sale of those crypts will replenish in its entirety the perpetual cares fund. That is a fact. So we, again, we are utilizing in excess of $300,000, but the sale of the crypts that we are creating will replenish the perpetual care fund in its entirety. Okay, is there any other business to come before Celine City Council this evening? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Portem. Just a point of clarification, that also includes the crypts as well as the niches for that amount.
Excuse me, thank you. Any additional business to be brought before city council? Mr. Gierbaugh?
Mr. Roth, I just wanna comment that I do know that based on the redevelopment that has been done by city, and there's stringent work at getting additional graves into that, this perpetual care fund would nowhere be near this amount had they not done the additional graves and added that into that. So this has been a very fiscal, responsible way of getting this, so this cemetery can continue and exist as it is. I appreciate the help worked done by Mrs. Hill and by Mr. Ruble, in trying to get this to be this way.
Thank you, Mr. Gierbaugh. Any additional items to be brought before council this evening? Well, our next meetings are on December 5th, 2011, at 7:00 PM, and December 19th at 7:30 PM. We do not need to excuse the absence of Mayor Driscoll, because we already did that, so I will adjourn at 8:46 PM. I've gotta have a mover, folks.
Aye, so move.
So moved by Mr. Roth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.